Well, we're told. But other than that, so no, nothing major has really been formalized for capital improvements. And it might be something in the past is on the books, but it's something we haven't looked at and started engaging on. So we're going to do this, this, that and the other because we're just kind of like spinning our wheels because we know we can't act on it.
I think that's something that we're going to have to all work together on. So you're getting the momentum in one step, but then especially just the budgeting. It's always, you know, there's a lot of different hurdles to overcome. But even if it's something that's small, if it's formalized, that's really what they're going to want to see me to check that out.
Thanks. Thank you for. I suppose we do. Yeah, but Commissioner Daniel Smith spoke to Commissioner Hayes Bradford and she should be here about ten fifteen minutes. Thank you.
So you say something small, what would that kind of look like? You know, when you kind of know what that would look like?
I think, uh, I know that they're slated to do some work that we haven't had.
Oh, okay.
Formalized. Uh, to formalize the work that is going to happen, even if it's at a small scale, you know, if it's, we, there are capital improvements occurring with some of the road projects and different things. We can just get that on paper, then at least it's a formalized, you know, this is what we're working towards that we can kind of show, no, regardless of the scale of the projects. Yeah.
So even like the project is coming up now where he said the Cherry Hill Road from Inkster to, I meant Cherry Hill to,
Middle Belt.
To Middle Belt. I know Cherry Hill from.
You're right.
Okay, right, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be considered, and as long as we can make it formal, that will be considered something. Okay, so we, and even about Avenue, we've already completed.
Right, so that's, I, I think we'll have to work with DPS to your kind of statement to figure out what else is, there are projects planned for the next five years, so if we can get them on paper, then let's at least roll that out as a way to check that box off.
I, and I guess too, and I don't know if you guys know or not, maybe something you can inquire about because those different roads that are being repaired or that are in the pipeline to be repaired, that was something that was voted on years back. And you know, just like you say in the five year plan is budgeted for, you know, outward or futuristically, so it's nothing like saying, okay, we're coming together saying this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to do, it's already in a pipeline.
Oh.
I don't know if maybe you can retroactively.
Is that?
Or what you have to do.
Everything for one.
Go check, go check. Go check. Brother, you living in the past.
I think even if there are projects that were voted on previously, we have, you know, as long as we keep updating it to say, okay, this is what's, we had to push this off a couple of years and now we're doing this, as long as it honestly reflects where the community is at, at this point, that's the most, in my experience, the most important component. It's, even if it's, we voted on this five years ago and wow, we're just here creating that and maybe potentially including some of that historic, uh, projects as well to fill that out.
Cause I think, um, a couple of things, like you mentioned, the roads, even lighting, the upgrades with DTE for not only here, but across the city, they were doing it in sections and things like that. I'm quite sure that should be included.
And I know they're working on some parks grants through, uh, the DNR, and so that type of thing is going to roll out in the next five years. They're working on another grant through AARP, so there's some, you know, like I said, even if it's not, oh, we're going to be able to redo this or focused on the facilities that we kind of think of commonly, even if it's kind of the smaller components, as long as it's, we're moving forward with some things, that's, I think, the key component.
Yeah, I, I think talking to Mr. Vivins, we're just having them bring out that repertoire of things as far as water infrastructure. Um, Commissioner Kenezzi was here the other day and he said he's working either tours or going to get us the eighty-five thousand dollars out of his coffers for the parks and,
Right.
right for, uh, parks across the city and I think all of that.
Yeah.
Should be included, because this, those are some heavy lifts, this is our capital improvement.
And the key thing to remember about the plan is that it's, we just need to show the plan and that's, you know, doesn't mean we have to, no one's going to be holding the feet to the fire to actually complete it, so.
Got you.
Okay. That's a good thing.
So, okay, so my question is, was some capital improvements that like, there are capital improvements that I know we have on our wish list, can those also be included that we, if, if, if funding becomes available in the next five years, that, that would be part of our plan?
Yes, the ultimate goal of the capital improvement plan though is more of a budget tool. So the, um, wishlist items, I think typically live in policy documents, in master plans, like, for instance, with the Parks and Recreation Plan, there were definitely wishlist items in that plan, but it was a way to, here's what we're thinking about in a big picture, and then the capital improvement plan really becomes a technical budget tool, so it's hopefully going to be reflect as accurately as possible the capacity that the city has to actually move the projects forward.
Cause I know Harrison Avenue is another component that is on the pipeline that's definitely needed to be done, so I know. That, if, that, that, we're trying to do that, I know we're trying to do that, that got caught up.
Harrison, it was, I'm gonna say it was further down the pipeline versus Avenue and like, uh, John Bailey and whatever else, just because of.
The connector.
Yeah, it's, it's the connector, but it's not that many homes, if you will, on Harrison.
That's true.
And of course, they're trying to do everything at once, whoop, and not just the road, you gotta do underground and everything too. Um, and I think kind of sort of, it might have been based off of the Paver Study as well, where they went and raided all of the streets in the city of Inkster. And then, of course, um, the water infrastructure guidelines changed and all that stuff came in and probably do it for a little tizzy as well. Um, a point that, or something you guys just pulled up when you were talking about budgets before we opened the meeting and then we'll come back to this.
Yes.
I think the reason, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm thinking about multiple budgets, we usually talk about capital improvement in the budget talks. And I know you said they're like a wishlist, you want to do it as accurately as possible. I think one of the reasons we kind of leave that at zero is because we know we can't potentially budget for it, because if we do, then we have an unbalanced budget for whatever it might be, and we have to submit a balanced budget to the state before whatever date in June, July, whatever it is. So I think that's one of the reasons too, where we just kind of almost, we talk about it, but we don't go overly in depth into it.
Yeah, I think that's something we'll move up, I'll help move forward with, uh, Vivins and DPS and, um, keep you abreast. But I know now that we have everyone here, let's go ahead for procedure purposes and formally open the meeting. And then we'll circle back on the RRC components.
Alrighty, sounds good. Good evening, everyone. The time is six fifty-nine PM, and we are going to go ahead and call the City of Inkster Planning Commission Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Cheryl Hayes Bradford.
Present.
Commissioner Darrell Davis, excuse.
Yes.
Commissioner Tanya Williams. Mayor Patrick Wimberly. Commissioner Tavon Hall, excuse. Commissioner Matt Willis.
Present.
She didn't call Vice Chair Kimberly until she asked, because we haven't really talked about her resigning in the, in the formally in a meeting. So should we call her name or wait till you?
Oh, we have.
You know, we haven't had a meeting since she resigned.
Oh.
So. I know, but I'm just saying, we haven't had a meetings, I know we haven't had a meeting since she resigned.
Correct.
We haven't had a PC meeting. Cause when y'all talked about you at the city council, that's probably why you feel like you did it.
No, I think we did, because we had that one, we're just, this right here, that's why this is under unfinished business.
She wasn't here.
Yeah, she wasn't here, but she hadn't resigned at that point.
Exactly, I know she was, I know it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Cause I knew, I kept thinking it to myself when I was writing her name down. Should I write her name, should I not, should I write her name?
Okay.
So should I call her name until?
Resigned, do we call her now or, because it hasn't, we haven't had a meeting since.
I think you can call her and then.
Say.
Will, yeah, formally accept the resignation.
Okay, Commissioner Vice Chair Kimberly Faison.
So you want us formally accept it now or in the?
Let's formally accept the resignation now.
Okay, and at this time, we will formally accept, uh, Kimberly Faison's resignation from the planning commission.
Um, Commissioner Rebecca Daniels here, and for the record, Chair Steve Chisholm.
Here.
You do have a call, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, let's do this. Actually, I will just read this, uh, under miscellaneous. All right, you have the agenda before you, has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda?
Yes.
Alrighty, are there any additions or corrections? Hearing on the floor, so before motion.
Some move.
They're properly moved and supported to adopt the agenda, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes, the agenda is now adopted. Down to item number three, adoption of the minutes. Adoption of January twenty-three, two thousand twenty, hmm, January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty, the floor is open for motion to adopt the minutes.
Adapt the minutes as presented.
Second, they're properly moved and second, is there discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, first hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing, but on the agenda. Okay, this one, I should, I was right, alright, is there anyone from the general public who wishes to speak this time for items not scheduled for a public hearing, but on the agenda? Hearing is seen none, we're moving down to item number five, public hearings, we have no public hearings. Item number six, unfinished business. Item A, case number two-two dash thirty-three, two-six-two-six-zero Stolen SLU Special Land Use. Recommendation of special land use permit for a proposed childcare center for seven to twelve children at a residential home located at two-six-two-six-zero Stolen Drive. Due to the number of children care being proposed, a review for a special land use is required. Ms. Dixon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, this case you heard at the January twenty-third, uh, twenty-twenty-three meeting where a public hearing was held, uh, no action was taken at this ti- at that time, so it has come back to this body under unfinished business. Uh, at this time, I would like to read into the record a letter that didn't quite make it to the planning department in time for that meeting, but, um, has been included in your packet as a public comment for the previous meeting. Um, Ms. Helene Maycock, uh, Stolen Drive resident, has addressed you to say the purpose of this letter is to convey comments of a business operating on the residential street of Stolen Drive. This comment prays to please deny land use of a business operation on a residential street. The following reasons are why. Inkster has a plethora of vacant properties, land in commercial zoned areas that can be used to operate a business and parking. You should not allow a business in a residential area disrupting the quiet enjoyment of residential neighborhood. This property appears too small for a business where children can occupy, has only one bathroom, no exclusive area for children, no escape route from the basement, kitchen is very small, backyard is very limited, no parking for the numerous employees and owners, owner cars. Only the north side of the street is for parking, ordinance signs in place, potential of daily violations, traffic tie-ups due to drop-offs and pickups causing standing on both sides and in residence driveways. This action could open the potential for widespread abuse of residential areas being used for commercial businesses, which is undesirable. This is residential neighborhood, not commercial. Traffic daily over the speed limit driving down Stolen Drive into Westwood Park entrance at the end of Stolen Drive. It is not safe even for children who are, who already live and play on Stolen Drive, not safe to permit the addition of business traffic. The traffic is observed over speed limits down Stolen Drive, coming around east and west from Biltmore Street, not safe even for the children who already play, not safe to add business traffic. At the traffic is observed daily over speed limit down Stolen Drive, coming around from North Shadow Lawn Street, not even safe for the children who already play, not safe to add business traffic. That was from Helene Maycock, so I just wanted to read that in as it did not arrive to the planning department in time for the public hearing. Uh, I do want to remind the body that the planning department has reviewed this and, uh, has recommended approval of the special land use. It is a special land use that is permitted within the residential district according to the City of Inkster zoning code. The body has any questions, I'm happy to answer, and the applicant I know is also here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind, um, my colleagues, I know we get, um, yeah, think of the word. It's like the second time this has probably happened in, I don't know how many years, when we got to a, a matters and we didn't take up a vote and we actually needed to, whether we voted up or down. We, I mean, because our, our vote is merely a recommendation to city council, it's not the final say-so. With, whether we recommend to approve or recommend to deny, we have to take up a vote. Um, that's why this is back under unfinished business, and I should have formally stated that at the last meeting, wasn't necessarily thinking about it in that capacity. I just wanted to remind you guys, that's all.
So next time, we have to say no.
Yeah.
If we do not.
Chair, Chairman Harrison?
Right ahead.
Yes, I would like to also remind the body that when providing a recommendation to do so with justification based off of the special land use standards as outlined in the city's zoning ordinance, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, commissioners, um, do you have any questions, comments, questions or comments, I'm sorry?
I'd just like to say that since I was at the last meeting, and you know, this was whatever, whatever reason, extremely controversial. So I, I took it upon myself to really go through the special land use review of the, um, different, you know, the, I think we had like nine reasons or whatever, why, you know, a, a, a special land use should or should not take place. And I didn't find any reason to say it should not.
Oh, thank you. Anybody else? And I know that's a big thing too, on council when it comes to the fork, because council does have the final say, so when you're talking about, uh, avoiding litigation and things of that nature, that's one of the big days, like, please state the reason or as Ms. Dixon said, the justification.
As we were hearing, the, the, the public, and, um, it kind of threw us off a little bit, you know, being concerned about, you know, their, you know, their, the way they feel, you know, about people in their neighborhood, but you know, us as the planning commission, we had to make sure that we are looking at this in a proper, with the proper eyes, and this is why we have this. And I went home and specifically went through and I'm like, there's no reason to deny her of this, um, of this use.
And in cases as such, that's something that in the future, you know, once you cross these roads, uh, ordinance changes can be imposed, but you know, you can't say, oh, we want to change this ordinance, just block this person from doing that.
Exactly.
It was already on the books. And that's something that, I know it's, it's real hard, there's a lot where you want to commission to really digest, understand, but it's even more for the general public to really understand that when they've never been involved with that capacity before, because it was nothing, never really directly impacted. Other than that, commissioners, if you don't have any further questions or comments, floor is open for motion.
I move to recommend approval of proposed childcare facility seven through twelve documents to city council with the required conditions listed in the planner's report, that's condition number one, provide details regarding number of employees and order for parking calculations to be performed.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, commissioners. We're down to new business and we have no new business. We're down to miscellaneous, have item A, present, presentation of the annual planning report for two thousand and twenty-two and annual action plan for two thousand twenty-three, so twenty-three. I'm making up stuff, Ms. Dixon, you have the floor.
Uh, I just want to applaud this body on a very, very productive twenty-two. You had fifteen meetings, um, in twenty-twenty-two, and I have included a list of all of the projects that the planning department has overseen, but, um, in the planning commission's case alone, I mean, it was definitely a year of special land uses and you all know that, so, um, I, I just want to say, we got a lot done last year and great job. Um, we had a lot of reoccupancies as well, which I know don't necessarily come before the planning commission because they're administrative by right, um, just change of occupancy, but it's exciting to see so many new buildings be, coming with new businesses, I think there was over twenty, uh, reoccupancies that we processed, so. I think that's great, and, uh, as you know, we are currently still working through the marijuana ordinance, uh, revision, but I really appreciate all of the input that this body provided and, you know, going towards city council and that discussion is helpful to know that this body has vetted that, uh, both in the zoning code and the, the business chapter amendments. Um, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan was written and adopted. Uh, we had the parliamentary procedure training, um, joint training with city councils and, and all the other boards and commissions that was, uh, brought on, presented by the Michigan Municipal League, uh, I think that was really helpful for everyone. And one of my favorite, uh, moments was the redevelopment ready ad hoc committee creation. I think I've truly to this point still not had a better public meeting, um, there was just, there's so much energy going towards that initiative, and I know it's the next thing on the list, so I won't belabor the point, but, um, everyone really took on a great role with that, and to see it pioneered by community members rather than just the planning department has helped, especially as there's been a lot of staff transition, which is a perfect time to introduce Derek Dowdell, who, um, is the city planner here in, in the office. He's working, um, full-time, so I'm just kind of here as supplementary at this point as well, and so this is an exciting development, um, for the planning department and planning commission.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening. As, as, as you said, I'm Derek Dowdell, I am the city planner. And what's kind of funny is I, um, my, I got my first start with the city of Inkster, I did an internship here back in, eh, uh, two thousand and six, something around that time, and so, um, that was the start of my, um, planning career.
Come back home.
Yes, absolutely.
I look forward to working with all of you and, uh, I'm happy to be here.
You said, ooh, I think he was about to say nineteen something.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, two thousand and six. Some history, that's some history. So, uh, question, uh, where, where did you go after you, uh, did your internship here?
Um, I actually ended up going to Texas, for a number of years, and then I've been back, um, worked for, um, a couple of organizations, uh, most recently, well, until here, I was with the city of Detroit.
So basically, you couldn't take that Texas heat, so you come back to the cold.
No, we're gonna say Four Seasons.
What's that?
Oh, Four Seasons.
Yes.
Alright, well, welcome aboard, uh, we look forward to working with you, I think we saw you, or at least I saw you at a council meeting in the crowd one day, and I figured, you know, because I was expecting the administration to introduce you maybe at that, at that particular, uh, meeting, but didn't get around to it. Um, so, thank you for being here and.
And welcome home.
Thank you. Alright.
Would you mind spelling your last name for me?
Dowdell, D-O-W, D-E-L-L. I like the chemical company, Derek like the computer.
Dowdell. Oh, Dowdell, I mean, you got both of them in there, Dow and Dell, okay, that's kind of cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to say too, uh, to the planning department, and I, and I think those you guys, I can't remember when, everything is becoming a blur, but thank you for that recommendation of convincing the meetings, instead of having, having to call a cancellation for that first meeting every month or get here, and we got like half an item on the agenda to really talk about or hold on, that's really saved not only us time, but it saved you all time and effort as well.
I, I have to second that because even this month with the special meeting, I, and if you have city council, I mean, you know, at, you, by the time you are working on the one meeting, you're on to the next meeting, and so being able to really concentrate efforts, um, in other components has been really helpful, and we've been able to update our applications, update the fee schedule, create internal review processes that have helped, uh, applicants really understand what the whole nine-step process looks like from, you know, applying with us to getting their certificate of occupancy and business license. So, um, I think I appreciate that as well, so. And then I will transition to kind of looking ahead and what the rest of twenty-twenty-three hopefully has in store for us. Um, I know with Derek joining the team will be, we have a lot more capacity, and he has experience working with, uh, the TIFA, and hopefully we're going to be working on the DDA and some of the other economic development initiatives that, um, have kind of been talked about, but not necessarily really hit the ground running yet, so. Um, but the first thing on that list is the redevelopment ready certification, which we're gonna get into more fully, we, we touched on it a little bit, but I think Kim, um, former Commissioner Faison was very optimistic that we'd be able to achieve this by April. Um, I'm going to move the goalpost back a little bit to say May, and I think that's realistic. Uh, and once we get that, then hopefully we'll be able to, uh, well, not hopefully, we will be able to update the master plan, which I think is, it's time to do that. It's, was adopted in twenty-seventeen, and we've presented kind of two options for the master plan review and update, and I've talked with the mayor about this as well, and option one would be to kind of review and reaffirm the existing plan, so we could sit and go through the plan and, um, kind of undertake a series of working meetings and kind of just make small tweaks to the master plan, or we could go through a full, um, amendment or update, which would be funded by RRC, so the RRC, I mean, EDC would be able to fund a master plan update. And, um, that's option two, if you're looking at your annual planning report. And this would be, you know, we would have, uh, new public input, we would have full public engagement component. And I, I want to highlight that because I think that's really important, because we've run into some planning decisions that have been difficult, especially around marijuana in the last year, and we have a snapshot of what that looks like when we come to these meetings and we have a public hearing and the people who, you know, come and voice their concerns or their support, but that's only a snapshot, and there's, there's other planning issues that are coming up as well that we kind of need to get, check the pulse of the community since twenty-seventeen, the community's changed a lot since twenty-seventeen. And getting an idea and being able to base our planning decisions on a document that truly reflects what the community wants and believes in this moment and, you know, going forward, much more close to that future than twenty-seventeen is, is, um, I think really important because we come up, I go to city council meetings and people, you know, council members ask me, or members of the public ask me, well, what does the public feel about these issues? And I have to say, well, I have to rely on the public hearing and what people said during the public hearing, and you know that that's not the full picture, and so to be able to rely on a fuller picture, I think, would make it easier for you to do your jobs as well. So I, I want to just highlight that as you think about recommending option one or option two. I know when discussing with the mayor, he was in support of option two and wanted to hear what this body's preference would be. Um, we'll come, we'll circle back around that, I'll give you some time for food for thought for that as I go through some of the other, um, components of the future of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, so as I mentioned before, the economic development strategies, the city has had a number of studies done, real estate studies done, um, both residential and commercial in the last five to eight years. We've had a downtown development study done and I think there, it's great, it's great research, but it's time to really figure out how we're going to implement that. And we're at a precipice now where people are starting to invest in the commercial real estate especially and also the residential and figuring out how to prioritize infill development, how to kind of create a economic stabilization program. Maybe it's even the DDA, you know, getting back up and running and creating a facade improvement program. So those are the types of strategies that, you know, I want to work on. And Derek is kind of also, I, I don't want to say an expert because I know you're gonna laugh at me, but I'll say an expert in, in helping create kind of those strategies going forward. Another component is continuing to, uh, bring the communication between departments to a higher level. So when I first started here, uh, there was a lot of transition. A lot of the departments had just transitioned to a new department head and everyone was, you know, kind of figuring out how to get their footing underway. And we've been able to really develop relationships with the building department, with Department of Public Services, with the engineer, with really all of the departments and continuing to formalize that beyond just someone walking into your office and saying, hey, what's going on with this? Let's get all of this documented so we know where all the projects are. And then I know we also have a laundry list of zoning ordinance amendments that we want to undertake. And that's something as well as we continue to work through the RRC, um, certification process. Because as I think most of you know, we have the essentials and then we have like the full certification. Once you hit that full certification, it comes with more funding for different opportunities. In the meantime though, I don't want to lose sight of the zoning ordinance amendments that we can make, maybe on a more ad hoc basis. So, um, we would like to be able to do a full diagnostic of the whole ordinance and, and figure out how to best update it. But trust me, every time I go through it, and I know Derek does too, because he comes in next door to my office and goes, have you seen this? I don't know about this, you know? And so we have a, a list running on, um, zoning ordinance changes that we want to make. But that's kind of the high-level items. I, I want to circle back to the master plan review especially and just hear what your thoughts are. But I think it's gonna be a great year and I really look forward to working with you all.
Commissioners, anything at this time? I know there's a lot to digest at once, so I'm not expect you to just come up with anything, but, um, you can now or feel free to shoot an email after the fact. All right, if no, was that item B or was that the annual action plan portion?
That was, um, this was all one thing, so.
At this time, I'm sorry, go ahead, move down to item B, discussion of ready, uh, redevelopment-ready community action items for certification.
Thank you, Chairman Chisholm. I know we were kind of mid-discussions, so, um, just to recap on the kind of outstanding list of items, I, we won't have to go into full discussion, but just for the record, we do have the, um, capital improvement plan that we talked about, that we, we need to create some sort of formalization of what the Public Services Department is undertaking in terms of capital improvement. The public participation plan, which will be a perfect component to fit into that master plan process, but it's something the Planning Department wants, is going to develop, so you can kind of put our name again next to that one. And then the, um, internal review process, as I said, we're working through that as, with MEDC, we proposed kind of one staff review process and we're gonna make a little bit more robust. Another option, another item was payment methods. And I think with some of the new payment methods, the city's introducing with the kiosks and different things of that nature, I just have to get into the board and describe those and have them to, aware of all of the new options for payment that are in the city. And we can check that box. Um, the other item was the annual report, so we just checked that off of the list. And then I know that, uh, Chairman, or I'm sorry, um, Commissioner Daniels is working on the application and recruitment materials. And then, um, Commissioner Williams is working on the onboarding. Uh, so we also have some members of the public who are part of the ad hoc committee, who've been working really tirelessly with editing and helping with these documentation. So I will let us, uh, continue our discussion, but just as a quick recap, that's where we are in the process.
Okay, um, two things. One was the public participation piece that you spoke of. Does that speak of getting the public just engaged at regular meetings or does that speak of just how we conduct public participation?
Uh, so I would say both. Uh, I think it's kind of a two-tiered thing, approach of how do we do better to make the public aware of what's going on? And part of that is what's going on at public meetings and getting people to, you know, come to public meetings or express what they, what their concerns or comments might be there. But how else are we capturing some sort of participation overall as we move forward? Not just simply with developments, but we move forward with even this type of initiative, the RRC-type initiative. I think we have a really strong base to work from, so that's good. But we need to formalize it in some way to figure out how we can continue to do better.
And I'm glad, uh, you pointed that out because of the simple fact that I know when I, in a different capacity and I had to attend other council meetings for other communities, which was under my job description, if you will, their council meetings, and now speaking of ours, would be packed. Um, and then you'd even have at some of the council meetings, members from their DDA there and their planning commissioner to speak to the matters that was before those particular councils. And I don't mean just one or two other members, I mean, it's almost like a whole, many meetings inside the one big meeting. Um, but to really expand upon it and the public was there as well. And we've always, I know Commissioner Faison talked about it and then we did too, because unless it was something super controversial, you look around the room and there's nobody here that's engaged like that. And then after the fact, whether it's a week from now, a month from now, a year from now, we're trying to recall something that somebody's, um, calling us to the front of the congregation about, that we voted on already, that's, that's going to pass. So especially once the construction or something like that starts. And they say, hey, what's going up in the middle of Michigan Avenue? It's like a gas station. When did y'all vote on that? Like it's been, it, it built its own, the lights on now. But anyway, yeah, that, that would be helpful. Uh, any other additional thing? I just wanted you guys to come up and introduce yourselves. Since you're on the ad hoc committee.
Don't be scared. Seraphina.
Okay.
I mean, I've been to city meetings and things, so I've met you a couple of times, but now I'm part of RRC. So I'm here to help in any way that I can because I'm still learning a lot of the process, but I'm here for it, so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe and, uh, I have a lot of real estate experience zoning. Been a realtor for many years, licensed builder. And I think I can bring some of my expertise, uh, to some of the suggestions of, of whatever we can put together for improvements.
Thank you both, I commend you guys. I know a lot of times we have persons in the community that say they want to get involved, but they look at their schedule, they, they determine they can't or they realize something might be too big of a lift and they, they back away from it.
Well, this is scary because I don't know anything they can tell you because they're like, they're like, why doesn't she know what a commissioner is? That's, yeah, my knowledge, but anyway, I can help for sure.
She's definitely been just.
She's been awesome. She's been very, uh, she's been very easy to work with because she wants to learn and she wants to contribute into the community. So we're very grateful.
You have to tell the story.
That Tanya forgot about us today?
Oh, no, 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 not that story. No, I'm not throwing Tanya, you just, she just threw you under the bus.
That's okay.
Okay, so I wanted you to tell the story of how you decided to get started because you came to a.
A city council.
No, you came through training, that was the training, parliamentary.
Oh, was that where you talked about it? I thought of.
So you came to the parliamentary and training, right?
No, I came to that because you told me to, to join the RRC. Because you, I think you mentioned it at a council meeting.
Okay.
Just talked about it and I, I came up to you and talked, that's why I said it's good that like maybe we can do, we can have something RRC at this meeting or the city council meeting, because I would have known, wouldn't have known anything. So I, that's how I started. Mentioned it and then I came to that training. That I did learn a lot from. Thank God I went to that first before I started with you. Yeah, it's cool, it's a cool experience so far.
We appreciate you.
Thank you both for being with us and thank you for your time and your commitment. Is there, uh, anything else before I throw my?
I just, I guess, moving forward, want everyone to feel engaged in the process and be clear that what everyone's responsibilities are moving forward. So, um, and I know we have a invaluable asset as well that I don't want to let that go, uh, unutilized or underutilized. So, um, I know maybe we can just work out a, a brief or quick timeline to try and hit a May completion date. And I know that seems in my mind at least a little bit ways away, but it's only a month and a half, so.
Yeah, trust me, I, I like that May, just don't say April.
Yeah, I love that. So I think it's, just so I have also clarity, is your current, are your workflow kind of, you guys are preparing the materials and you're reviewing it or what's?
Yeah, because my, my component is actually completed.
Okay. Do you know how to upload it to the Trello?
Did I, I don't know if I've already did that, but yes, I can do that.
Okay, and then just make sure Stephanie sees it so she can review that.
And I'm working on the handbook.
Well, I think that's what I, because I think the original, back in December, we weren't sure who our representative was because of less of that transition. So I, I, you can forward her contact information.
Absolutely.
For that on, and I would like for both of you guys to review as well.
Oh, yeah.
Before I send that, so I'll let you guys review first and then I'll let you send.
Yeah, that sounds great.
And I'm, and I'm still working on it.
Sir, you know, if you can also forward us your contact information as well, appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna include both of them. We're gonna put them, we're gonna put them up on the gun running. Yeah, we, we, yeah, I'll, I'll add them to the, uh, ad hoc, uh, you know.
Commissioner Davis.
I just wanted to say I'm still working on the handbook, I have.
And then.
I started, I was, I was, I was, I mean, I, I was at a good starting and all of a sudden I got so much on me, but I, I, I will.
No, I, I understand, trust me. In terms of, uh, uh, former Commissioner Faison's, uh, approach for training, that's at least what my note says is what she was working on. Okay, just want to make sure that was accurate. Do you know, I know she said she was fairly close or already done and I'm not sure if you. Okay. Okay, great. Um, yeah, and if we can just get that email kind of widened out to include both Derek and I, then we'll be able to keep moving all of those items forward. And likewise, you know, we'll probably, I would like to be able to send you the materials that we create to have you vet it and be a part of it. One of the things that I was working on is like a new business checklist, which I think is pretty exciting. So, um, we'll kind of circulate all of the documents. And then I'm happy to be that single point of contact to get it into the Trello and make sure that I'm.
I think that would be better.
And, and make sure that I'm keeping up with whatever comments Stephanie might offer, so.
I think that would be better.
Okay, that, that works. I just want to make sure we were all clear on that.
Yeah, I think that's the best.
All right, thank you.
You know, we could just confirm our dates and times that we meet for the ad hoc committee. Because I think we got, uh, we plan on keeping them the same.
Well, again, based on like in this situation here where we had a special planning commission meeting that, um, I, I, so I guess the question is, do we want to continue with the second Monday of the month unless there is a special planning commission meeting?
I think it worked well, especially if it works well for Jane.
Well, we'll, we'll have to iron that out, uh, as far as where we look, where the location would be. I guess the, was the time, because we, we kind of act, we kind of adjust the time based on where we were currently meeting at the library. So the library closes at seven, so we went from five-thirty to seven.
At the library every second Monday.
Every second Monday.
That, that works for me, but I will let you, if that doesn't work for whatever reason, you need to shift it. I think we do know this space is open for the most part outside of, because this was originally the first planning commission meeting of the month.
Okay, oh, okay, okay.
All righty, anything else? All righty, hearing none. Um, afforded you guys the resignation email from former Commissioner Kim Faison. Uh, that actually came on February sixth, two, or, yes, February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. My apologies on that, on not sending to you guys before now, but I just wanted to let you know you all have that. For the record, I'm gonna just read it, but I just wanted to send it out so you, so you guys did have it since we formally accepted the resignation earlier. Dear Churches, I'm writing to submit my resignation from the Planning Commission. It has been an absolute privilege to work with you, learn from you and to serve with you and our colleagues. While I will no longer serve in this capacity, I remain a part of the community and will be engaged in other ways. I will occasionally participate in meetings and initiatives as my schedule permits. I think everyone has my cell and can reach out anytime. Actually, I'm sorry, she said she had blind copy everybody.
We didn't.
Y'all was looking and not responding either. I was like, oh, oh, I'm in trouble. Well, there it is. We all on the same page.
So today is actually just for the minutes is the form the accept, acceptance of her.
Yeah.
This will be the first meeting afterwards.
Okay.
Um, and then we're down to item number nine. Second hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing or on the agenda. Is there anyone from the general public who wishes to address this body at this time? Hearing to see, and commissioners, do you have anything before we adjourn?
I do.
Commissioner Davis.
Um, this was, this, this relates to, um, the last city council meeting. And it's regarding a, a action that was supposed, I guess this is, should say, did not take place. And it's kind of good that we're talking about this because you brought up about the communication thing. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear, that we're clear on how public hearings are to be conducted, to make sure that we did what we were supposed to do, because for whatever reason, city council stated we did not have a public hearing. It was an audience, they was hollering, we didn't get a public hearing.
Some members.
Some, some members. And I mean, most of them was in the back of me, that's why I said it, so. But I knew that we had a public hearing and I just want to make sure of that process. So if we can, if you can confirm that we did have a public hearing.
Yes.
And, and we did do it in the proper manner, manner that it should have been done.
Yes, that, that's correct. So the way that the state law and the Inglester Code of Ordinances is written is zoning, anything relating to the zoning code is to have a public hearing at the Planning Commission. The public hearing was properly noticed in the newspaper. It was noticed more than fifteen days prior to the meeting that took place on November twenty-eighth and, uh, followed all of the legal requirements necessary to qualify as a official public hearing. The Planning Commission then recommends actions similar to how the special land use works to city council. At that point, the city council can opt to have an additional public hearing if they feel that is necessary. The, I did hear comments that this, uh, it, there was a lot of things said, taken out of context. Uh, one of the concerns of one of the council members that stated that there wasn't a public hearing was because there was no public comment in the minutes of the, from the planning commission meeting. And I attested that there, we didn't have official comment on that item that evening. And in their opinion, they didn't feel that justified a public hearing. So, uh, that's a matter of opinion, I suppose, but in legal fact and, uh, all other regards, the Planning Commission had the public hearing and it did qualify. If at that point, city council had decided they wanted to go move forward with first reading, that would have been proper and, uh, fully legal, it just was a matter of, uh, I guess, sufficiency in the, in the opinion of the council members. And that, that's okay, we can have a public hearing and there will be one at the, uh, April third city council meeting.
But everything was done properly on our part. But everything was done properly on our part.
Thank you guys for that, because I know that all, that discussion when that took place prior to my arrival that night. And I think in the past, just because of things being so, I don't want to say controversial, but not quite fully understood by the public that a public hearing would be held at the planning commission level, then one was probably held at city council level. So the public, those who attended council meetings and don't attend planning commission meetings had an opportunity to speak at that particular time. And or, um, you know, in the past, residents spoke at orientation. So they always felt like they had an opportunity to speak before a vote was casted, whereas some slight changes have occurred. And that's not always the feel, you know, of the general public. And so uh, yes, I got questioned about that a million times and I kept going back and forth with it too. Like, wait a minute, well, we, I know we had a public hearing there, but I didn't, I thought, and I was thinking back on past stuff, that we had one at city council too, but as Ms. Dixon just alluded to, you don't necessarily have to unless the city council, if you will, petitions for an additional one, then the first reading and then the um, second reading and then action. So thank you for the clarity.
And, 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 and in this instance, city council did not request it and that's why it was not one done after the fact, after we had ours. After planning commission had, I should say.
Correct. There uh, I have, was trying to open up channels of communication with city council to ensure that we were capturing public comments at that point um, to their desired level. And they did not opt for any sort of public hearing to my knowledge, so nothing directly to me. Um, but we'll move forward and everyone will have an opportunity to say what they need to say. And I think that's, I'm always in support for more public in what than not, so.
I just wanted to make sure that we did it properly and in order and, because I'm like, I'm the secretary, I know we had a.
I, I.
Did I miss something?
No, I printed everything out, uh, I had all, all of that ready. So uh, no, we were, we crossed all our Ts and dotted all of our Is.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, somewhere in there, we will, yeah. I, um, yeah, there's something we hadn't addressed, that, because we hadn't formally accepted the resignation, so. All righty, uh, anything else, guys? We were just talking, um, Commissioner Williams was asking about the vacancy of, of not just a commissioner, but the vacancy of a officer spot now, because Commissioner Faison was our vice chair. Um, I know in the past, when we talked about positions, nobody particularly wanted the vice chair to get that, at that point tied. So just. But I guess just kind of null over that until our next meeting, so you guys have sign, nobody feels on the spot. But we do need one, because any of the, whoever the chairperson is, uh, whoever the vice chair is, stuff like that, you know, it's a trickle-down effect. We need to just make sure that uh, people do have a place and can continue business in the event something comes up like the merge.
Yes.
All righty, so again, yeah, just null over that, guys, and decide who would like to take on the position of vice chair. If y'all want to take the matters up right now. A motion has been made, is there support for it?
Um, support.
Properly moved by Commissioner Willis and supported by Commissioner Williams, all in favor?
Okay, wait a minute, I support, I supported that, so wait a minute now. Okay, don't, okay.
Dual uh, supporters, fine with me. All righty, all the, all the favor? All the polls? Motion passes, this meeting is now adjourned, it is seven forty-five PM, everybody have a great night.
Thank you, you too.
I want to remind you all, there will be a second meeting this month, so we will have one.